And regulations that affect land use development. Staff, please call the roll.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Kinney.
Here.
Commissioner Lampe.
Here.
Commissioner Lane.
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie.
Present.
Chair Ortiz Pino.
Present.
Commissioner Silva. Commissioner Small.
Present.
Commissioner Wellitt.
Present.
Commissioner Young. Commissioner Zegir.
Here.
Let the record show there's a quorum.
All right, excellent. Well, let's go ahead and get into it. Item number two, approval of minutes, legal action report for September 17th, 2025. The Chair would entertain a motion for approval.
Chair, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving minutes and legal action for report for September 17th, 2025, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none. Motion passes. Go ahead and call for item number three, Middle Housing Code Amendment, public hearing. Will staff please provide their presentation?
Hi, Chair and Commission. Real quickly, I think Jay Young is actually in the waiting room. We need to just get him in here real quickly. So hold on one second.
We are holding.
Oh my God, we have.
I guess he dropped off, so I think we're okay.
All right, staff, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair Ortiz Pino. I just want to do a mic check. I know last time it was really loud. Are we okay? Okay. Thank you for joining us tonight. Tonight is a public hearing on the Middle Housing Unified Development Code.
You could probably come down just a tad on the volume. It's pretty good. Or just.
Just move away?
Yeah.
Okay, for tonight's discussion, we're going to touch on a few different subjects. Some background of Hospital 2721 and missing middle or middle housing in the city of Tucson, the mayor and council direction we've received so far, some of the code development that we've gone through, public engagement, phase one and phase two, planning commission feedback, and then some of the proposed middle housing amendments we have for you. Is there a way we can move that? Thank you. So just a quick background on some of the overview proposed code amendments since last time we spoke. So we're talking about middle housing being limited to a middle housing area, some reduced setbacks and minimum lot sizes, and increased density in that middle housing area, an option to waive parking, and then privacy mitigation for two-story homes. Some other changes that we're proposing that would be on a citywide basis are easing of the building code requirements, easing of commercial development requirements, landscape requirements, and then the allowance of middle housing in large subdivisions, and then administrative approval of Platts. So just to touch on some of the background as a refresher, Hospital 2721 was passed in the state of Arizona.
There's an email from Jay Young saying he's kind of getting into the meeting on Zoom. Do we have other participants from online on Zoom?
Yeah.
So people are able to access it? My pad is also having issues. I was just wondering if that was across the board or not.
Can you hear me? This is Commissioner Zegir.
We can hear you.
Yes, we can.
Oh, I can't hear you anymore. Just barely.
No, that's just quiet. Okay. Commissioner Zegir, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now. Thank you.
Perfect. And it looks like Jay is here as well, so I think we're all ready.
Perfect, thank you. So just a little bit of the background from Hospital 2721. This applies to cities with population over 75,000 residents, which we are very much within. It requires local regulations allowing middle housing, which is the building of duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes within one mile of the central business district. And that applies to all lots that are zoned for single-family housing, which is most lots in the city outside of some industrial areas. And in at least 20% of new developments over 10 acres, which end up being a lot of the larger subdivisions in the city. Those regulations cannot be more restrictive than those of single-family homes restrictions within the zoning code. And then, single-family and middle housing have to follow the same standards and procedures. And that's why some of these things will be a citywide tool and some of them will not. Development standards that we've come up with as a proposal, we're looking at height, the minimum allowance of two stories, one off-street parking space per unit, and then commercial standards now applying to five-plus units on a lot as opposed to the current three-plus I do want to mention that the goals of middle housing do align really well with some of our adopted plans in the city of Tucson, including the P-Chip Plan, which has the goal to increase affordable and attainable housing options throughout the city, Tucson Norte Sur, which initiates code development of code updates to support transit-oriented development, and then the Prosperity Initiative, which aims to increase housing mobility and opportunity. It also aligns with Plan Tucson 2013 with some of its housing policies and the newly adopted Plan Tucson 2025, which also has similar housing policies that support middle housing. I also want to mention that there are several tools in the city of Tucson already that support middle housing. Middle housing is currently allowed in many of our residential zones. You can already do two to four units in a lot of zoning districts throughout the city. Even in the R1, which is a lower residential zone, you can do two units if you have 10,000 square feet, plus you are able to have an accessory dwelling unit. So a lot of the zoning already supports middle housing throughout the city. There's also an option to do flexible lot development, which is a popular subdivision tool, which enables you to have smaller lots and have more flexible development standards if you're building a subdivision development. And as I mentioned earlier, accessory dwelling units, which is a relatively new thing in the city of Tucson, you're already allowed to do one or two accessory dwelling units on many sites across the city. The single-family attached land use in the Unified Development Code allows for smaller detached, smaller lots with attached housing, so something like a townhome, for instance. In the R2, you can have a 2,904 square foot lot for a townhome type development. And then parking updates, recent updates to our code already allow for the up to or down to one parking space per unit in the Unified Development Code. Wanted to display visually what is changing and what is currently allowed because of HB2721. So if you look at that top row right there, in terms of single-family residential and townhomes, you can already do that in the R1, R2, R3, commercial and office zones. You can already do a duplex on some large lots in the R1, but you can also do a duplex in all the other middle housing zones and multifamily housing zones. Triplexes and fourplexes you cannot do currently in the R1, but you will be able to do that now with the middle housing with residential standards, and the same with the R2, R3, O1, O2, O3 zones. You cannot do multifamily apartment in the R1, but you would be able to with commercial standards in the other zones across the city. And then you are still able to do ADUs, and your maximum number of permitted lots jumps from three to four in the R1, and then it will just vary greatly depending on a few conditions and lot size in the other zones. When looking at housing affordability across the city, we've done some research with our partners at Eco Northwest. And if you kind of look at that third row over there for large detached single units, this is what we see getting built a lot in the city right now. It requires 200% plus AMI for a family of two, which ends up being not affordable for a lot of people. It ends up requiring 154K annually for a house of two. When you start looking at middle housing types, you can kind of see small detached single units, which end up having smaller lot sizes and shared utilities and can have a, can be flexible in more ways than a large single detached unit cannot be. And that starts getting at some of those housing opportunities, so 120 to 150% AMI for a small detached single unit, or looking at a condo or townhome where you have a 80 to 100% AMI requirement, which is even less money for a family of two. And all that is really important because we found through some of the work of our partners that because of future need, because of homelessness, and then current underproduction in the city of Tucson right now with building housing, we're going to be about 35,000 units short of where we need to be in 10 years. And so providing middle housing is an important policy decision for the city in addressing some of those other types of housing that we don't see a lot of in the city of Tucson. Just a quick timeline of where we've been with middle housings. We started in April with a planning, with a mayor and council study session, which led to our first phase of public outreach in May, did some analysis of the zoning code and some development of a preliminary alteration to the code in June and July. We went to the public for round two of public engagement in August. We attended a September 17th Planning Commission Study Session with you all, and now we're here today for the public hearing. So going forward, we will be having a mayor and council study session next week to update them on our discussions tonight, and then we will be at mayor and council in December for consideration for our January 1 deadline. So just chronologically going through some of the things that we've addressed over here on that timeline, mayor and council held a study session on April 22nd of this year to direct staff to explore a few different things. One, explore flexibility with our current zoning code in terms of development standards like height setbacks, minimum lot size. Also, looking at applying middle housing rules citywide or a larger geography than just the bare minimum required by the state, and then looking at some design standards for landscaping, pedestrian circulation, et cetera, making sure that the product that we're going to be getting with middle housing looks good, that there are some design standards that have to be followed. And then to approach the public with the idea of a phased approach to allow time to keep reviewing and modifying the standards over time. The middle housing area that staff are proposing is based off of a few different things. We're calling this the Tucson Norte Sur Country Club Option. Initially, we did, and now we're calling it the Proposed Middle Housing Area. Within that area, there's a range of housing types and neighborhood characteristics. And then we're doing this right now to meet the timeline requirements of Hospital 2721, which is January, which is coming up very quickly, with the intent to explore citywide code amendments in the future. To give you a good idea of how we started with the geographic process, so we started with the four potential options that we have of a central business district already in the Unified Development Code, one of them being the Business Improvement District, the Rio Nuevo area, the Infill Incentive District, Central Business District. So the city of Tucson doesn't have one single designated central business district, so we were working with four boundaries. So when we were looking at where we were going to propose this, we started making adjustments based on some local contextual data, including a range of zones, but with very little rural residential, so RX1, RX2, RHSR zoning. We were looking at an area with existing middle housing that already exists and will offer a design precedent, an area with a range of housing and neighborhood characteristics that supports evaluation and adaptation. And then we also wanted to make sure that we weren't cutting through different street networks, neighborhood boundaries, and trying to make sure that we had an area that kind of made sense with some of our adopted plans and major streets and routes. So when we brought this to the public initially, a lot of community input showed a preference for this area that we're proposing, this middle housing area, which extends east to Country Club, south Tucson, Silver Bell, and then a couple different streets to the We started our first round of public engagement, which we're calling Phase One of Public Engagement. This was three different meetings in May of this year. We had a really good mix of participants. 66% of the people there identified themselves as just concerned citizens. The 20% about were housing professionals, and then 15% said other professional. We had the three meetings, one in person on May 22nd, which had 37 attendees, 90 attendees between the May 28th and 29th Zoom meetings. And then we also left a comment form open for a couple weeks for people to provide some feedback. So overall, three meetings, around 360 participants, 500-plus comments, and a really good mix of people that showed up. And I will, I just wanted to say that there was broad support for more flexibility in the zoning code, as well as a wider geography, and a lot of support for a citywide applicability. Some of the key themes in that May public feedback was code flexibility, so support for code flexibility, concerns about the impacts on neighborhood historic preservation and character of historic districts, parking, so we had some split views on that, some thought it was too much parking, some thought it wasn't flexible enough, landscape standards, so worried about the cost, worried about enforcement of landscaping, and then the lack of flexibility built into the code. Affordability and investors, so concerns over institutional buyers, reducing local ownership, and then a good debate about limiting the geographical area or just going further In June, we went back to mayor and council for a study session where we presented them with this information. We got some feedback from them. They said to explore more flexible development standards like heights setbacks, minimum lot size, look at applying the middle housing rules to the established area that we proposed, looking at some design standards for landscape, pedestrian circulation, et cetera, and then a phased approach to allow for the review and modification of those standards over time. So after that, we went back for another round of public engagement. This time, we had 193 attendees, 450-plus comments received between August 17th and September 7th, and then a general sentiment for more flexibility and a wider geographic option. And then something we hadn't heard in the first round was support for more homeownership models, and I'll get into a couple of things we talked about with that. And then a continuing concern for National Register Historic Districts. So we had a very similar participant list, 62% identified as residents, 22% as professionals or other, and then 16% housing professionals or building professionals. So that takes us to, after all that public feedback and then meeting with the mayor and council, to our middle housing proposal. So one, we're proposing a new residential use, which is middle housing, which is a building or buildings with two to four dwelling units on a site, including townhomes, excluding accessory dwelling units. And we are proposing to go with this original Tucson Norte Sur site that we had proposed, which we're just calling middle housing now. And I do want to just get into a little bit of some of the proposed code amendment, what is going to be proposed only within the middle housing area and what's going to be proposed citywide. So one, building code changes. The International Residential Code may now be used for structures, one to four structures on a lot. Typically, right now, you can only use it if you have one to two, so we are proposing to expand that. Somebody could still come in and use the IBC if they wanted, but they now have the option. And I do want to point out that there's no registrant required to create plans using the International Residential Code. That will be a citywide tool. Commercial standards for zoning to apply five or more units and not need a development package will be required for projects of one to four units. So right now, if you were going to build anything more than two units, you would have had to opt into a development package process, which would be a commercial site plan. Now, one to four units can opt into residential, and that will also be a citywide tool. New landscaping requirements will apply to all new infill of one to four units. So this will be citywide, any house being built will have to adhere to the landscape code. And then, middle housing is going to be added as a new land use, and this will only be within the middle housing area. This is for, and then those will be subject to reduced setbacks, reduced minimum lot size, an option to waive parking, and then a requirement for privacy mitigation in certain circumstances. And then, citywide, large subdivisions will now have to allow, at least allow for 20% of residential lots to have middle housing. Doesn't mean it has to be built, we just have to allow for it administratively. And then, something more recent, we have now administrative approval of Platts. They do not need to go through mayor and council anymore, and that will remove several months of review and time when it comes to making a plat or a minor subdivision or however you're splitting up your lot. And that will be a citywide. Getting into some of the development standards that we're proposing, we have a defined use in geography, and in that geography that I showed you earlier, middle housing will be allowed, two to four units allowed on all single-family lots, and again, that's almost every lot except for industrial. We added in some flexibility related to setbacks, so a five-foot flat, I'm sorry, a five-foot setback, non-variable this time. A lot of times in the residential zones, you have a variable setback, so your height, your setback will depend on the height of the structure. We're proposing just a five-foot setback. And then a 10-foot setback based on some conversations we had with you all in the front matching neighborhood properties if you're adjacent to somebody with a smaller front street setback. We're also proposing a reduced minimum lot size in all of the zones that you see here, so the R1, even some of the lower density, R1, MH1, O1, will be a reduced minimum lot size from 7,000 to 6,000, and then some of the other zones will be from 5,000 to 4,000. When doing some analysis, we actually found that by reducing even 1,000 square feet, it opens up a lot more lots, even within just the middle housing area for a split or a subdivision, so that middle housing can be built on more lots. And then, of course, an increased density up to four units on a parcel meeting, the new minimum lot size, which you can see on that right part. In terms of some of the proposed design standards, we used something that Drachman Institute helped us create with a site plan and how that would look. So if you look at number one, we've changed some of the current, some of the landscape requirements where landscape is currently not required, so some trees, some ground cover in the front yard with some flexibility. Parking, a max of two spaces allowed in the front yard based on some conversation we had with you all of trying to find that balance of parking on a site. Privacy mitigation, which applies if you're adjacent to a one-story building in an R2 or more restrictive zone, so R2, R1, O1. So if you're next door and you're proposing a two-story building, you'd have to adhere to some sort of privacy mitigation if you're next to just a single story. We also, I mentioned earlier, prevailing front yard setbacks, reducing setbacks for that. Sidewalk and access requirements, we heard a lot of people with a desire to see that, so enforcing that inclusive home design standard that requires sidewalks to go from the right-of-way to your front door, allowing for better access and a better product overall. I'm going to give Amanda the mic to talk about landscaping code.
Thanks, Nick.
Thanks, Commissioners. So the new landscaping code will apply citywide to all new residential development of one to four units, and now that includes ADUs as a result of our last meeting. And so this is new builds only, expansions of current existing builds will not apply. And essentially, it's requiring one tree per 1,000 square feet of the proposed floor area. You can use existing trees towards this requirement as long as they meet the spacing requirements and that root protection is used. Trees that are required, half of them need to be in the front yard for climate resiliency, aesthetics, buffering. The other half can be placed anywhere on site, with one small exception where if your project is just a single ADU on an already built-out site, you can plant that tree for the ADU anywhere. And if you have site constraints that limit your tree placement, we do have a shrub substitution process. There's also a ground cover requirement where you would have to have a vegetated crown cover in the front yard. That area would be determined by basically taking your street front edge minus any curb cuts, multiply that by five to get a five-foot buffer, and then you could place that amount of ground cover anywhere in the front yard as illustrated on the lower right. Tree placement has some stipulations around distancing from utilities, existing structures, sidewalks. As a result of our conversation during the study session, we reduced that sidewalk spacing from six down to five feet to be more in alignment with some other planning documents at DTM. There is a requirement for a depressed planting area around the trees of six inches deep, and then we added some more specific width requirements of 36 square feet to allow for some flexibility in shape. There is flexible watering requirements, plant species criteria, load of very low water use, a hardiness rating below 15 degrees, and then, as a result of our last conversation, we added non-invasive and from ADWR's plant list. And I will get back to that in a second. The last change is that we did clarify some definitions and documentation requirements as a result of our conversation, so thank you for that feedback. A note about the ADWR plant list, there's been a lot of discussion about this, and we really appreciate everybody's feedback. The challenge is with creating a new list specifically for middle housing is that we would end up with two lists, one for the middle housing and then one for all of the commercial development, and we feel that would be very confusing and challenging to understand and administer for all of the people in the city. And also with the knowledge that there are several projects underway related to landscaping code that are taking, that are an opportunity to take a more holistic look and make those more consistent changes, such as the low-impact development process, which will be coming to you all in the next year or so, so you'll have an opportunity to be part of those discussions. And then, the third reason is that we feel the landscaping list is a very interdepartmental concern. It affects parks, DTM, Tucson Water. The Landscape Advisory Committee is working on a plant list as well, so we would want to make sure we have time to do that coordination. And with the HB2721 timeline, that doesn't allow for a lot of that interdepartmental coordination that would be required on a project like this. And then, this is just a recap of the exceptions to the landscaping code. As I mentioned before, ADUs used to be on this list, you'll see that they're not anymore, and otherwise, there hasn't been any changes here. Thank you.
A question?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to get clarification of the tree per 1,000 square feet of floor area. Does that, does that mean footprint, residential footprint on the site? Because on a two-story building, you know, floor area could be larger, of course.
It would include the second floor, as I understand it.
Quick follow-up question to that. So most ADUs go to 650 square feet. Does that mean you don't need a tree or anything below 1,000 square feet? And then follow-up to that, if we do 1,001, does that mean I need to do two trees?
It's one tree for every 1,000 square feet is the cutoff, so you would round up, basically. So if you had a 600 square foot ADU, you would have to do one tree. And if they had a 1,001 square foot project, that would probably be rounded up to two, although.
But if there was site, size constraints, you could swap it out for a bush?
Yes, yes. It's been a minute since I looked at it, but I believe if you cannot fit all of the trees, you can substitute five shrubs per tree that you need to substitute.
Five shrubs.
I believe so. I would have to look at it. I would have to look at it and I'll look in a second.
Can I ask a question? How much of the crafting of these landscape standards were done in conjunction with the private sector, landscape architecture firms and the home building industry?
I think to the extent that we had multiple people participating in the middle housing planning process.
But we did not expressly ask, you know, those groups of the home building industry or, you know, landscape ASLA groups, et cetera, to weigh in on some of these standards.
So Commissioner Wellitt, we have presented to them and we have received some feedback from some of them as well. But specifically, we did not have like a working group related to that for those landscaping standards. And a lot of what we took here is actually based on what we've seen elsewhere in other municipalities, especially Phoenix and some of the other areas in the valley that we've seen.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. And I'd like to add that we also met with the Landscape Advisory Committee, which is compiled of multiple professionals in that sector.
Another question. You mentioned that you added something about non-invasives, yet I don't see that in the code amendment. So how will that come? Like where will that cross reference be?
It should be in the same area where we list hardiness and lower, very low water use. And I'll have to check that it made it in there. That was the intent to include it.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to clarify, all of these landscape standards apply to every single new, single family residential unit moving forward.
Commissioner Wellitt, yes, unless you have like subdivision standards and that's when those would apply.
Right, once you're greater than, you know, five units, et cetera. But if you, currently, we have no standards, right? We have absolutely no standards. And I recognize the state statute suggests that we cannot apply any stricter standards for middle housing than what is currently permitted for single family. So it seems like we're trying to get landscape standards for single family. So we can then implement them for middle housing. And that's where it's just, have we talked to those, you know, those developers, those home builders that go in and build these and base their, their whole performance and modeling based on buyer preferences and choice? And how does that work into this equation when that doesn't exist right now?
Yeah, Commissioner Wellitt, yes, and it is, it's a balance, right? You're trying to find the balance between still providing the landscaping that we have in our commercial standards. When you get rid of the commercial standards, that goes away. And then you would have no landscaping standards for these. And we've seen the result of that in some of the development that's out there. And we don't, that's something that we heard from the community and something we've heard through a lot of our meetings. So we are trying to find that balance. I will say again, it is only for one to four units. So it's like one off, single families versus subdivisions and things of that sort, where the standards would remain the same.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so chronologically, that takes us, and appreciated Amanda. Chronologically, that takes us to our Planning Commission study session that we held with you all in September. So some of the key themes and subjects there were expansion of the proposed middle housing area to a larger or citywide option. Landscape code components, we had a really good discussion about that, such as exceptions for ADUs, which we discussed. Improvements to passive water harvesting elements, spacing from sidewalks, the accepted species, dimensional standards such as street perimeter yard setbacks, privacy mitigation, flexibility, eligibility for the parking waiver, questions about separate utilities, which we had, and then clarification on the large subdivision process. And then finally, questions about appropriate maximum lot coverage and minimum lot size. So based off of that conversation that we had with you all, we had, we made some changes from that study session. So one, we cleaned up some of the use specific standards and a clarification of group dwellings, which we were asked to do. We clarified some landscaping aspects, removed the landscaping exception from ADUs, clarified the tree placement requirements, added non-invasive clarifications for the ADWR. And then we added that four foot diameter planting basin. We also clarified the parking waiver for transit and bike infrastructure, changed that prevailing front street setback flexibility, and then updated privacy mitigation standards to make them a little bit more flexible than they were written a little stringently before. So a summary of some of the public comments that we'd received since then as well. So in terms of geography, we had a lot of support for citywide boundary versus the middle housing area versus a minimum boundary. We had a lot of different responses on that. Infrastructure concerns that we needed, people were concerned who would upgrade infrastructure if needed. Concerns about overlays and how that applies to the middle housing area, which I will get into in a little bit more detail. Impacts of middle housing on national register historic districts. Some design standards and landscaping, concerns about the impact on setbacks and privacy, property values. Then housing, touching on the housing crisis, how does middle housing expansion help with the housing crisis? It helps diversify housing supply for families, younger people, seniors, and those that live independently. Also incentivize infill opportunities and then supports making housing more affordable by providing more options. So, and then there was also concerns about equity, looking at a broader zoning flexibility, which helps distribute growth and reduces exclusion. So I wanted to touch on the middle housing area of right now that we're proposing versus a citywide implementation. So right now, the proposal is meeting and exceeding the state standards in terms of what is required geographically. And we do want to point out that we are expanding that considerably to include other neighborhoods, because this is all grounded in local zoning and our adopted plans. So like I mentioned earlier, like the Peachip Plan, Plan Tucson, we wanted to make sure that these were still grounded in plans that have been voted on by the public and accepted by the city of Tucson. Our proposal defines a clear context sensitive boundary compared to HB 2721's minimum, which was a little scattered, it cut off neighborhoods, it cut off major streets and routes. It was not looking at that minimum geography, did not make contextual sense for the city as a whole. We also took public input, which both supports and opposes the expansion of the middle housing area, making sure that we heard all voices here, and then includes several citywide supportive changes. So when I went through that list of things that are changing citywide, these are things that we went above on. Changing, changes to dimensional standards, changes to using the International Residential Code, changes to when you can use the building code. So we did make several citywide changes that still support the building of middle housing, even if it's not within that middle housing area. And we are still proposing a phased approach toward a citywide expansion. So that is the plan as of now, is to continue supporting and looking into a citywide approach through a phased, a phased way of doing it. And we also have some funds and that are going to be funded through that pro housing grant that the city of Tucson already has. In terms of a future phase, allowing for us to continue exploring this will allow for additional analysis of areas with different characteristics than the one that's in the current middle housing area. And in areas especially that have less plan guidance. So we find a lot of the plan guidance that I mentioned here, like Nortesur, like Peachip, like Thrive in the O5, it is concentrated in one smaller area in the city. So this allows us to kind of expand and, and reach out to the public a little bit more on an expanded geographical area. So right now in the proposed area, there's very little in terms of rural residential. Once you start expanding east a little bit more, there's more rural residential, which we feel like we have not gotten a lot of feedback from in terms of the people that live in those areas. And so right now, our design standards and landscaping will be citywide tools, which does help expand middle housing as a whole. It also allows us evaluation and revision periods from our initial proposal to continue working on this and to continue seeking feedback. And then it gives us an opportunity for outreach in additional regions of the city that were less represented in our initial feedback and outreach periods.
Quick clarification, Nick. You say that public input both supports and opposes expansion. Do you have a tally of how many people support, how many people oppose expansion?
Yes, it turned out to be about 66% proposed expanding.
So it's not both support and opposed, it is majorly support citywide, correct?
So Commissioner Silva, yeah, so it was pretty consistent around 60% or so through each phase, right? We had our mentee meter, we had, you know, in person writing things down, we had a comment form, and we've had comments that have come in with Planning Commission. And I think we agree with that, right? I think that, you know, we think that, you know, a citywide approach, you know, is a good way forward. We just feel that the phased approach really does, is, is, is kind of allows for us to really expand in a way that's, that really meets the community's needs. But also it allows us to do that additional analysis of things, as Nick was talking about. I mean, there's portion, there aren't, we purposely left out some of those rural residential areas. We know we want to include some design standards and things of that sort. We want to make sure that we hit, we hit that right balance essentially as we do this. And we feel that doing so and doing so through our pro housing grant is, is really a good way to be able to actually meet that. And top of that, we are doing a lot of citywide things within this that really do support a lot of the areas that are already R2 and R3 that already allow for middle housing. So by allowing for the IRC instead of the IBC to be utilized by removing the commercial requirements for zoning, as well as the administrative process for Platts, all of those things are things that really support middle housing. It just doesn't necessarily go all the way that it would in the middle housing area, which can inform future regulations as we move forward. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. But yes, we definitely, I think that's reflective of the feedback that we have received so far.
Well, and if I might add, I think there's, you know, a little bit that we're missing as well. We've also done a lot of outreach as it relates to Plan Tucson. That just came to the commission, as well as did the CCT, all of which asking very similar questions. Where would we like to see growth occur? How much density, intensity, et cetera? And so when you start to look at the feedback we received on middle housing alone, and then you compound that by CCT and Plan Tucson, I think we're, we're, we're missing it here that this boundary might be a little bit far, far too limited based on what feedback we have heard already. You know, subsequent processes, you know, or previous processes. So I think we've got to consider, you know, that there, there's a lot more than, you know, the handful of, you know, folks that are coming out saying it's a problem, just saying.
Can I add something to all this? I mean, by and large, the slide that you showed us that outlines the actual changes to the existing UDC show me that we're not changing the zoning code so incredibly much that like this stuff is already allowed. And so by and large, what we're doing is making it administratively more streamlined for you guys to be able to approve this kind of higher density development. And so I see the boundary as both very inequitable across the city, but also keeping in place the administrative hardships that you already experienced. And now you're saying that you're going to continue studying the areas that are outside of the boundaries, which is more work for you, when I think the intention of this change is to remove boundaries from getting from point A to B. So I don't see the boundary as being very helpful. And again, given all the data that Lexi just referenced, the city has spoken in my mind and told us that the boundary is not what they want to see and it's not helping us.
Real quickly, Chair Ortiz Pino, it looks like Commissioner Zager has her hand up.
Thank you. You're going to have to let me know because I was unable to get onto Zoom to see any hands up.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Um, okay, a few things in a prior slide, as far as the zoning codes, CR1, R2. So you, I noticed you didn't, I didn't see you mention anything as far as the MH1 zoning. I know previously that was included in it. Have you omitted it on purpose or is it not included? Is it? Is MH1 included in middle housing, that zone?
Oh, Commissioners, yes, it is. It, it pretty much applies to all zones that allow for single family residential.
Okay, all right. Next question, as far as boundaries. From, from what, from what I'm hearing is, I notice I read a lot of the comments on this. And clearly there's, there's, there's two sides to this issue. There's the people that want to do developments and for profit. And then, then you have the residents on the other side that are worried about their neighborhood turning into just, you know, having a, being, you know, maybe put in a bookcase where they have two story buildings on every, both sides. And there is, you know, a single story and they still have a large lot, but there's, they've increased the population on both sides of their house, you know, threefold. There's, there's, there's that, that look at it. And then I'm hearing a lot of touch about, oh, we can't have any boundaries. But from what I would think is we're doing this in phases so that we can look and see how this actually affects not only the, the neighborhoods and the people who currently live there, but also the infrastructure that needs to go along with this type of building. And basically saying is it's better to walk cautiously into something like this than to go guns blazing and let, and just take off, take off the gloves and let them build whatever they want, whenever they need to without, you know, much guidance. And I know that's what the zoning codes are there for. And I really like that you're, a lot of this is, is taking a step back from mayor and council and leaving it up to, let's say, the Planning Commission or the Planning Department as far as leaving it up to the experts. I think that's a great idea. But I'm, I'm really not sure that you should just, you know, leave off all the bounding and landscaping is there for meaning saying, well, why? We don't have to do any landscaping, we just put in a gravel front yard and call that good? No, it's, it's not good for neighborhoods considering all this development is you're opening it up to be brought into residential neighborhoods for the most part. That I think that going slowly with this to be more sensitive to the people who actually are living here now, and they've been living here for 50 years or third generation. It's like saying, well, you don't matter because we need more housing. But this isn't guaranteed affordable housing, it just means more housing. So anyway, as far as boundaries goes, I, I, I'm going with like a cautious approach to this. Anyway, thank you.
So I'm going to go ahead and say, let's let them continue with their presentation. There is a time for general discussion. Let's let them finish the presentation, then we can get.
Oh, okay, so, so other people can make comments and say things, but since I'm not there, I'm not allowed to?
No, I let, I let you have your conversation. There's been robust conversation thus far, there's time for that after the fact. You've had your time, there's going to be more time. But I would like to allow Nick to finish the presentation before we start that process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for all the feedback. Thanks, Chair Ortiz Pino. Okay. Can we minimize that again? Perfect, thank you. So I wanted to touch on a couple of the bigger subjects that we've been hearing a lot about from the public and from you all, from Mayor and Council. One of them being the concern about historic preservation. I do want to make very clear that historic preservation zones and neighborhood preservation zones will all remain the same. All historic requirements will remain the same in all of those zones. All sites must still go through the historic review process. And many historic zones typically already allow for middle housing. So we are not proposing any changes with HPZ or NPZ. In terms of national registered historic districts, the proposed expanded middle housing area can help to decrease pressure on specific historic neighborhoods that have typically been under pressure for development. Based on the Drakman Institute research with the University of Arizona, more flexibility with dimensional standards can disincentivize demolitions. And so that's kind of the approach we took. Limit some of the setbacks, do a little bit more in terms of dimensional standards to disincentivize demolitions, to make it easier to build more in a backyard or in a piece of land. Also, the scale of middle housing development is generally in the context of existing neighborhoods, and the development of this type usually is incremental and does not lead to wholesale neighborhood change. We found this out as well with the, the onset of accessory dwelling units. We did not lead to wholesale neighborhood change. And staff cannot legally prohibit demolitions or restrict delisting of contributing properties. So that's why we found it important to address this in different ways, like changing some of the dimensional standards. We also heard some concerns about the airport overlay zones. So where airport overlays exist in the city of Tucson, and particularly that very small corner of the proposed middle housing area, the land, the required land use standards within the approach/departure corridors do prohibit some building of residential. And I just want to make very clear that the AEZ, which prohibits certain building of residential in certain areas, does take precedence, and we are not proposing any changes to the AEZ. It will not affect middle housing. One thing that we wanted to bring up to Planning Commission for discussion and for some input from you all is a lot size equal to middle housing density. So this is based off of some feedback that we heard along the way regarding different ownership models for people seeking to buy houses. And staff have the option to propose a minimum lot size by density. This would allow for the same number of units, but with an option to split or subdivide into smaller lots, creating the possibility of lower-priced units. So just want to kind of turn your attention toward the middle graphic here. This is an example of what middle housing could look like on a lot with or without a split. So what staff can propose, which we would love feedback on, is the option to do the same number of units on a parcel, but also provide the option for somebody to split that into four units. So what that would look like, or sorry, four lots. This provides the owner, a homeowner with extra flexibility for property owners to even sell newly created parcels. What this could look like in terms of red line in the code is if you see the image to the right. Right now, what we're proposing is, in, for example, in an R1 zone, is a decrease in minimum lot size from 7,000 to 6,000 square feet. So you would essentially be able to do four units on 6,000 square feet in the R1 zone. That minimum lot size would be 6,000 square feet. The option that we're presenting to you right now is a combination, which would be a proposed density and lot size change. So we would keep the four units per 6,000, but we would allow for a lot splits to have 1,500 square foot lots. It would be the same number of units per acre, but it would just be an option to split or subdivide for a different ownership model so that people could buy and sell smaller parcels with a house on it.
I do want to make clear that this is not in the proposed red line. It is just something that it was proposed, it was, we kind of put it out there at the last meeting, and I think there was some questions about clarity related to it, so I wanted to just clarify.
Can, can I ask a question?
Commissioner Weller, we're gonna wait till they're finished with the half discussion.
Thank you. Some other responses to feedback, some of the common themes that we heard were infrastructure. No changes are proposed to infrastructure upgrades. Infrastructure upgrades are required when deemed necessary by reviewers, and that would be different departments within the city. Tucson Water would be TEP. There are no changes proposed to impact fees, which go to fire, parks, police, and streets. So no proposed changes. If infrastructure needs to be upgraded, it will be the developer or the owner that is responsible for the upgrade. Concerns about affordability. The city cannot mandate the building of subsidized affordable housing. However, most of the data that we worked with the Drakman Institute on and ECA Northwest shows that middle housing can be less expensive than traditional single-family homes because of smaller lot sizes and fewer materials. The subject of lot splits has come up. The state regulates much of how the criteria for lot splits and subdivisions are written in our code. However, decreasing the minimum lot size increases the number of lots that are eligible to be split across the city. So when we did our analysis, it opened up a couple thousand lots to be split that typically would not have been able to be split. For example, if somebody had an 8,000 square foot R2 lot today, they could not split that into two 4,000 square foot lots. But on January 1st, they will be able to with the decreased minimum lot size. One clarification about group dwellings. There is one-use-specific standard that is not in align, alignment with House Bill 2721 in the R1 zone. So we did have to change that one-use-specific standard. Otherwise, group dwellings are not being touched and are typically not allowed in a lot of these zones, anyway. And then the topic of accessory dwelling units. The allowance for accessory dwelling units are not in addition to the four units per lot. They follow current regulations, which allow two ADUs on a site with one single-family home or one ADU on a site with a duplex. An ADU would not be allowed on a site with a triplex or a fourplex. However, there's a lot of flexibility with middle housing in terms of size that could be similar to an ADU. A couple of future considerations. We're looking at a Phase 2, which would be an expansion to a citywide model. This would be, allow us to monitor some of the outcomes, evaluate expansion citywide, track development patterns a little bit better, and then kind of look at some of those unintended impacts. We'd be able to engage the community a little bit better in Phase 2 without a firm timeline like we're under right now for reforms for broader middle housing adoption. And then staff proposed reviewing data after a year to determine the effectiveness of the code. And then staff were able to recommend changes based on outreach and data. So what is written now, staff can still adjust during Phase 2. And then another consideration is just utilizing this HUD program that we have. Expand our model plan library with middle housing designs, and then be able to provide technical assistance in capacity building for small-scale developers. And this was a part of the concern that developers would just come in and, and build housing. We're hopeful that we can use some of this pro grant to, to address some of those concerns. So staff have a recommendation, and we recommend that Planning Commission make a recommendation to Mayor and Council to adopt Middle Housing Code Amendment as proposed. Thank you. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I would now like to open this up for discussion with the commission.
Commissioner Ortiz Pino, I have a question. Thanks for the presentation, Nick. Quick question on the, the, what did you call it? Lot to match density, match density to lot? What do we call on that? That, that, right there. Question for you, I, I think this is a great idea because I, I think it achieves a lot of different things, not only the points that you've noted, but also helps provide some flexibility for existing legal non-conforming lots. So currently, in a lot of our historic neighborhoods, we have lots that do not meet the minimum lot size. And currently, you know, you, you wouldn't be able to do this. And so I, I love the idea of being able to apply the, the density to lot size incrementally or, or match it so that we could effectively do a one-per-1,000 square foot lot in that regard. But I just want to make sure that that could be applied, and that was the intention, so that if you did have a 2,000 square foot lot in the R3 zone, you could effectively do two units on that non-conforming lot currently.
Yeah, Commissioner Weller, that is the case. So in a, in an R3 lot, you could do two 2,000s with two units on them, yeah, in this scenario.
Thank you. I will say I support that.
I'm done. Commissioner Brisa online first, and then I see McCancy and Silva.
Okay, um, oh, I was, was looking at this thing, and I have a couple of questions on that. As far as, I'm just calling it like going from like a fourplex to single ownership. That's basically what this does. So, and I noticed that the, the sidewalks is in front of unit two. So how does this affect, if something like this is done, will each unit require, as far as a different type of landscaping? As far as how, how would the landscaping requirements come with something like that? And also parking requirements? Will there be any parking requirements, or we just assume that nobody can park? Like, I, I've seen units like this, you know, row houses back east. And most of these row, row houses will actually face the street. So there might be one single parking space per unit. So, and I know here we have deeper lot sizes. So I was just wondering, on something like this, it's, it's a great idea. I'm all in favor of row housing, but, and with single ownership, how would, as far as the landscape requirements and the parking requirements, maybe fit into this scenario?
Commissioners Aguirre, good question. So A, landscaping is still required on these. There are some built-in flexibilities in that landscaping code. B, parking would still be required at one space per unit, and we would leave that up to the developer on how that's going to happen. There are also ways to waive parking if you're within a certain distance from a transit line. And then I believe your other question was about access to the sidewalk. This is just kind of a model of how this could work. There are many ways that that could work. So sidewalks could be in the right of way, sidewalks could be shared through easements. There are multiple ways that could work.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCancy? Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. Two, well, one higher, sort of higher order or macro question, and then one that Mayor and I apply here. How much middle housing has staff projected that will be built as a result of this tool compared to the other tools available? I mean, is it a small percentage? Is it a large? Is this like something you, you guys feel is significant to the development of middle housing here?
Yeah, so Commissioner McCancy, I think there's several kind of factors related to this that makes it a little challenging right now. So kind of similar to what we saw with accessory dwelling units. There really wasn't much of an industry that was there in doing so. And also, a lot of times, it takes time for the market to kind of react to new regulations as those come in. So we saw those kind of start off with, you know, maybe 10 to 20 a year, and then it built over time, and now we're seeing a decent amount. But it's still incremental because it's actually within, you know, it's, it's, it's infill development. It's not, you know, on greenfield lots. The one other thing related to that is also just the fact that as you look at the Drakman Report, a lot of this really isn't financially feasible right now. It's challenging financially. And so we don't really expect a lot right away. But it is one of those things where you get it in place, and that is an option as you move forward. So we don't necessarily see it being a huge portion of the housing in the city of Tucson, but it is a way to help build density, take advantage of existing infrastructure, and one tool in the toolbox of housing, kind of.
So another tool in the toolbox, but, okay. The other question is, how much, how many vacant lots? Or what percentage of vacant properties are in the zone that you've, you know, the boundary zone for this middle housing?
Commissioner McCancy, I'm not sure of the actual percentage. It's not a huge percentage. Amanda is gonna pull up some of those vacant lot numbers for us, and then she'll share with the group.
Because it seems like something like this, if you could like get it to focus on vacant lots, that sure would be a benefit to everybody.
Well, and Commissioner McCancy, that, that's a really good point. One of the reasons why we looked at reducing that minimum lot size is that there are a lot of lots, and even vacant lots, that are just under the minimum lot size threshold. And so if it's a non-conforming lot, you can't actually go in and build on it. And so this would, just in, in changing it from, you know, 6,000 or 4,000, 5,000 to 4,000 or 7,000 to 6,000, it opens up a lot of lots that, that currently cannot be, be developed because they don't meet the minimum lot size.
Okay, so we could say that this, this tool or amendment, or whatever we call it, will increase the probability of vacant lots in this boundary zone being developed? Yes, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Silva?
Thank you all for the presentation. I'm really proud of like the code you've put together. I've got a couple of things I would like to touch base on, especially the lot size equal to middle house intensity. I fully support this. I think this is like one of the most important parts of the code you have crafted. As you noted, Dan, middle housing does not pencil out right now. It does not pencil out because you're expected to build the four units at once. So in the current market, that means about a million-dollar investment by one person, and then rent them out. If we're able to break this up into four, that means a quarter-million-dollar investment by a single person. It, it's much more affordable. We get past like starter homes. It's, I think, the only way to make this something everyone could afford in our neighborhoods. So I fully support this, and I think we should all. And then, Dan, you mentioned just right now that you don't expect to see a lot of middle housing getting built in the next year. So how will that inform the next phase if you intend to open it citywide within a year?
Yeah, so Commissioner Silva, that's a good point. I mean, I think that we will be monitoring it. We, it's kind of similar to what we've done with CCT. We have ways in our, in our current permitting system, and are hoping that that data over the first year, at the very least, you know, tracking when people come in and want to do a project, and the feedback we receive from that, and surveys and things, that sort of, it will provide some, some feedback. It is entirely possible that we won't have enough data, and we would have to potentially, you know, kind of extend that period of, of analysis. This doesn't just end after that first year. Sorry, good.
Um, Commissioner Silva, I think we would also be looking at that. Are there still barriers in the code where we actually need to make changes to make it easier in some cases to build middle housing as we expand citywide? So I think that's what we'd be looking at, as Dan said. What are, what's being proposed? And is, are those projects actually able to move forward based on this code? And what are we seeing getting built? What is working? So I think those are some of the things we'd be looking at in terms of looking at, you know, the experience of what's being built in that geography. But I think the other reason, as Dan mentioned, why we're proposing kind of the phased approach, where we're starting with a geography and then going citywide, is to look at some other aspects as well, that we did not have time to fully analyze in this planning period based on the state deadline of January 1st, 2020, 26 implementation. So some of those things we want to look at more are some of the things that was even brought up tonight, like the landscaping requirements. That is a very new requirement, getting more feedback and input on landscaping, on potential design standards as we go broader across the city, looking at if we have the appropriate design standards. And then as we go broader, that encompasses more zoning districts. And so with this limited geography, we are able to focus on regulations that are appropriate for a certain set of zoning districts that we have. As we think about expanding, that brings in rural residential districts, as Dan mentioned, and many other types of zones where we want to look at really what are the appropriate regulations for middle housing when it comes to minimum lot size, to density, things like that. And just make sure that we're calibrating for the very different contexts that we have across the city. So that would be the other reason that we're looking at a phased approach and more time for that analysis over the next year before we go broader across the city. To the point that Commissioner Weller made earlier about the citywide support in Plan Tucson and other plans and policies, we definitely see that, and we're really encouraged to see that there is support across many constituents in our city for middle housing. But I think our question as staff, and we're, what we're asked to deliver is how we do that. And we feel that there's more analysis to be done before we can propose something that truly works citywide for middle housing.
Commissioner Layden?
Thank you for a very comprehensive presentation.
Thank you for very comprehensive presentation. Um, and a lot of work over the last year on the, or a couple of months. I guess it has not even been a year, it feels like yesterday. So, um, thank you. I, I, again, I'm gonna, the boundary, um, feels really bad, uh, to, to think about in like logistical terms. And I think that this conversation feels very like oppositional, um, and the intentions behind it. The idea that you want a phased approach so that you can study the inner workings of the zoning change. Yet the boundary puts pressure on the neighborhoods where it's maybe most unclear what the outcome is. So the historic neighborhoods, the older neighborhoods are all within the boundary. So you're putting the most pressure on the most sensitive neighborhoods and removing equity across the city where a lot of neighborhoods that can benefit the most from this are excluded. Again, as this, I see this zoning change not only as opening up opportunity for residents, but it's also creating a steamline streamlined approach for you guys in the review process. And so by keeping a huge part of the city out of it, you're still going to have the same amount of work as you did for people proposing, um, infill projects outside of the boundary. People are going to come to you with those requests and you're going to have to take extra time to review them. Additionally, if you want a phased approach, you have to be able to give the most opportunity for these kinds of projects. And you referenced the Drachman report. And the reality is that the market that is going to dictate how many of these projects are built. And if you limit the area within which you're just limiting the number of projects that are going to be proposed to you in the first place. So you're going to get a very poor cross section of projects to be analyzing the success of this program through anyway. So I don't, if, I, I would rather see a, um, commitment from us to review this program in a year with no boundary. That gives us the opportunity to see more projects come across the desk. And it's not gonna, we're not going to wake up tomorrow and see 5,000 applications. We just aren't. And, um, the, um, most people, the people who are going to be able to benefit from this right now are going to be the people who already own pieces of land, which is going to be most mostly residents, local residents. So we want to see as many projects come through as possible. And right now those are going to be from our local community that need these houses. So, and this is not, this approach, missing middle housing is not going to fix our housing crisis. It's really only a small factor, a small percentage of the homes that we need to be built. So it's really about removing boundaries, not only for homeowners, but internally for you guys. And so again, if, if it's really a phased approach of analysis that you're looking for, it's not a, it's not a physical boundary you need. It's a timeline. And, um, I think in one year, put it on our agenda. Let's look at your data, let's look at your numbers. I always hear, um, the public worry that we're not going to be able to go back. We're not going to be able to take back what we say today, and that's just not true. If there's a piece of this zoning change that isn't working, that isn't serving the public in a positive way, that isn't working for you all internally, we can make the change. That's why we're here every month. So, um, I am adamantly against the boundary. And, um, I would only propose passing this with no boundary and a, and a maybe sunset, not a sunset clause even, but a, a time limit that we can, um, look at real data and real projects. And I think in terms of equity, it's absolutely inappropriate to leave huge sectors of our city outside of this, out, out of this zoning opportunity. So that's the, um, boundary discussion that I have. And then, um, I am also very, very supportive of the minimum lot size by density. Um, I think, I think that's an essential part of this as well. Um, and again, as far, like infill development is not going to change the face of our city overnight in any way. This is just a, a nice, um, stepping stone forward to give people opportunity in a market that's really expensive to build housing. So, um, I think that's all I have to say at the moment.
So going off of what Commissioner Lane just said, I had a question. Um, you know, if we're comfortable doing this within the North Face or middle housing zone, um, and we are, the staff is saying that they want to look at and analyze, how can we do this better in the second phase? And how, and if bringing it out to the rest of the city, well, let's do that. Well, if we're comfortable doing it here, why not expand it to the whole city? And then when we come back and do that analysis, apply those lessons learned to the whole city instead of just saying, we're going to apply this new section too. And part of what you said, Commissioner Lane, I do think there is a risk of going a little bit too far. Prop 207 does limit us and being able to walk things back. So I do think there is a risk there. It's not that there's, we can just come back next year and say, ah, it didn't work. We go that far, we have to stay that far because then we're limited. Um, but if we're comfortable doing it in one zone, why aren't we comfortable doing it? What's the risk?
So, uh, yeah, so Chair Ortiz Pino, I think, um, related to that, part of the reason why we're comfortable with that is because the amount of planning that has occurred there. And we really do already have a high capacity transit, a line that's being planned at 15%. It should be a 30% soon. Um, there is the choice neighborhoods area. There is, you know, the thrive zone and everything that's been there. There's been a lot of planning in that area and we've also done a lot of analysis on those zones. And so, um, that is the reason why we feel more comfortable with that area and learning from that area and then expanding citywide.
I, I see some other questions, but I think that just begs the question is why are we not focusing our plans in other parts of town? And with that, I'll just leave it with Commissioner Wellitt and then.
I want to piggyback off of this and, you know, we say the Norte sore boundary, but we're only talking about the Norte side of it, not the sewer side of it. And, you know, that's a, a large segment of the population that arguably probably needs this housing type and this option more to promote homeownership opportunities, to keep homeownership opportunities, et cetera. Um, and so I, I just, I struggle with it. Why are we stopping at country club? Why are we stopping anywhere, period? When, when this is just simply a mechanism to unlock housing choice. And that is why this is being pushed down through the state is because we don't have enough housing choice. We don't have enough housing, period. And how are we going to get there without, you know, just allowing this to be an opportunity? Um, I have more, but, uh.
Yeah, talking about citywide, the first time you presented this to mayor and council, they asked you to go to the public. They wanted to see what the public wanted. You mentioned today, then all three faces, more than 60% of the people want citywide approach. Why are we spending seven months of public outreach if we're not listening to the public? That's the part that's really hard for me. We're supposed to be up here representing everyone out there and we're not. We're choosing a boundary just based on something. It's not even following the transit corridors that we're talking about. It's not following the parts that need more equitable housing. It's just condensed in an area we decided arbitrarily. People want citywide, let's do it citywide. If, if you're saying you need the data, the data in this boundary will not inform what happens on the east side. Just like you said, this area is planned differently, it's built differently, it's different zoning. After a year, when we review this middle housing, it won't have the effects of what we're going to see happening in the east and the south side. If we want to see what's happening in there, we have to see it happen there.
Sorry, wrong button. Um, the other thing along, along those lines there is, you know, we talk about numbers and potentials. And currently what, what we're talking about is an area that experiences a lot of this housing typology already. And then the other side of that is where the city is suggesting elsewhere where this would be allowed, which is in areas that have properties greater than 10 acres in size throughout the city, where you would be able to do 20%. And so when you look at where that means, that means in Ward three and around downtown and all our established historic neighborhoods. And then the far flung sides of the community here in Ward four, you know, on the south side and Ward five where Southland's are, all of the state land is. And so what we're suggesting is that it's appropriate here and appropriate way out there, but nothing in the middle. It's kind of ironic there for middle housing to not allow for anything in the middle of our city.
I got Commissioner Zegir on line.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, a, a lot of this, um, development is we're trying to get away from a car centric type development. So where you have more people centrally located where a lot of the jobs are. Um, you have the U of A, you have downtown. Um, and granted, um, we have little pockets of businesses all across town. Um, and the thing it is, is to do this type of housing that's very dense and, um, where parking will be minimal, I'll just say that, in those neighborhoods as far as not enough space. And granted, so you're, you know, you might be close to a bus line, but that bus line, instead of taking you, say, 20, 30 minutes to get to work if you drove, it's going to take you an hour and a half because you have to make three bus changes. Or if you, you decided you're going to bike, that's providing you're physically able to ride a bike. Um, so, um, so wanting to expand this out, that's where the infrastructure has to be. Um, um, there's a necessity for that type of, um, to get people, you need, you need bus routes. You need good bike lanes, you need good streets. Um, you need the water infrastructure, you need to repair old sewer lines. There's a lot of infrastructure that you don't see, um, the electrical load. So I'm still in favor of phased because this is in the center of town. This is where a lot of people would, would prefer to live, especially if they work in this area where most of the jobs are. So I'm, I'm still in favor of just keeping it phased for now. Um, and rather than expand it, because then you end up with, um, if it works right, great, you expand. If it doesn't work right, it's centrally located and we'll own it. Anyway, all right, that's my thoughts. Thank you.
So Commissioner Lane, I, I do see you. But what I'm thinking is we do have more time for discussion after public hearing. And so I'd like to maybe get that started and then continue discussion after the fact. Is that okay?
Can I just say one thing in response to this? I just, we don't build infrastructure before the houses usually. I, I've learned enough on this commission that we ask for money when the demand increases, when we need to make the streets better. It's because they're being used in an, in an intensity level that requires that. So I don't think the comment makes sense. Um, I think we have to, we have to fill in the infill development first and then that incentivizes us a way to get the, um, the infrastructure built next.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and open up the public hearing to members of the public who would like to speak on this item. In general, there's a three to five minute, um, limit per speaker, which may be extended at the discretion of the chair. Members of the commission may ask questions of the speakers, but we do ask that each speaker be timely. As we want to make sure that all those who want to be heard have the opportunity. We have had one, two people's, um, request to speak ahead of time, so they'll be called on first. And then we'll call from the sign sheet. Thank you, Nick. Um, anyone else who is here in person who would like to speak can do so. I will call on the request to speak from people online. And then if you are online, you can speak. Please use the raise hand feature. I do see someone's hand has been up for a little while. Um, so let's go ahead and get started. And our first speaker here is Artemis Jun Torre. Now I'm going to give a three minute timeline. That's okay, so our three minute time limit. I'm sorry, can you turn your mic on? The little red dilly should be on.
Hello? Yes, thank you. I'm here representing Tucson for everyone. Uh, dear commissioners, Tucson for everyone is excited to support the proposed missing middle UDC code amendment and adjacent amendments to parking requirements, code designations, uh, for three to four units that will be in consideration today. We are also in support of the, uh, proposed, uh, lot size equal to missing middle density. Um, there are currently a three, uh, 3,700 Tucson for everyone supporters in Pima County. We know that the housing needs of Tucson citizens are not being met by the existing housing supply. The city's own commission study estimates that over 8,000 new homes are needed just to meet current needs. Over 30,000 are needed to account for future population over the next 10 years. Our current zoning prioritizes large car dependent suburban style housing at the expense of smaller, more affordable units such as duplexes and starter homes. Um, as the planning staff has stated themselves, there are many lots throughout the city that are below that currently in Tucson, the R1 zoned areas for a single family that require 7,000 square feet. Townhouses in many cities are around 1,500 square feet. As someone who has lived in Rincon Heights and currently lives in Miles, I can speak to the fact there are a lot of small vacant lots that are probably well below that 7,000 square feet mark and, but could fit a townhouse someplace or a very small duplex that are, that is close to the jobs and the university. So our current policies don't just encourage sprawl further away from employment centers. They actively contribute to housing rising costs. According to the Morrison Institute at ASU, land is currently around, the cost of land is around 20% the cost of a new single family home. Tucson requires that houses use more land than necessary at the moment. A single parking spot, um, that is not, um, that is privately developed can contribute anywhere from 4,000 to 35,000 in costs, depending if it's just a surface lot or if it's part of a parking structure. We appreciate that commissioners and staff have done significant due diligence, listening to the input of the public while incorporating appropriate edits into the proposal. We, we feel that if the boundary is kept as is, it may concentrate development in a part of the city rather than allowing new infill housing, uh, citywide. Uh, we at Tucson for everyone are recommending a citywide applicability of the missing middle amendments to all residential lots within the city. Um, we also, if that is, if we are not able to get that now, we do support that this be revisited. Um, so that the citywide, um, phase can be done as soon as possible.
Thank you so much. Okay, next up I have Kimberly Baesa. Okay. Then I have Brendan Lyons.
Test, test. Good evening, Chair Ortiz E. Pino and members of the commission. Uh, my name is Brendan Lyons and I'm the director of the Government Affairs for Southern Arizona Home Builders Association. On behalf of our members, thank you for your continued work to advance the middle housing code amendment. Saba remains strongly supportive of the city's efforts to expand housing choices and improve affordability through thoughtful policy reform. I'm not here representing the industry talking about profit. We have a housing crisis that we, we need to increase our supply. The Tucson Housing Needs Assessment found that we must produce over 35,000 new homes in the next decade, a goal that demands bold, citywide action. However, to ensure that this amendment delivers on its intent, we respectfully recommend the following refinements. I'd like to remind you of the intent of why we are here, to increase housing supply. First, and I'm hearing it over and over, make middle housing citywide. Limiting it to certain areas risks concentrating growth pressures in a few neighborhoods. A citywide framework would better distribute opportunity, create diversity, reduce rezoning pressures and align with community feedback that supports more flexibility and choice. As Commissioner Wellitt pointed out, we ask that you remove the proposed landscaping requirements for all new single family homes. While we value quality landscaping, this amendment is focused on middle housing, not single family, uh, development. Adding new citywide requirements here could add costs, uncertain, uncertainty that ultimately hinder affordability. Now, what you guys may not know is the National Association of. Now, what you guys may not know is the National Association of Home Builders commissioned a study and found that roughly twenty-three, twenty-four percent of the sale of all new, new family homes is directly attributed to government fees and regulations. We just had the president out of the National Association of Home Builders at a recent Government Affairs Breakfast and shared that with all our city council members, county officials and, and, and our region. I also like to add that another study conducted by the National Association of Home Builders found that for every thousand dollar increase, prices out four hundred and forty-four families while we have a supply issue. Third, clarity that, and I've heard it addressed, but I'd just like to provide clarity that the twenty percent middle housing allowance in qualifying developments is optional, not mandatory. And that's what I heard this evening. Developers should be encouraged, not required, to include these housing types, allowing, allowing the market to respond to the, to the demand. Once again, we heard tonight that we don't see a whole lot of middle housing being built. Allow this option citywide. And finally, as discussed, reduce the minimum site size threshold to unlock more opportunities, especially in the city's established neighborhoods where infrastructure already exists. With these refinements, the amendment can truly support Tucson's housing goals, create attainability, diverse, diversity, and well-located homes for residents across all wards.
Thank you so much.
Can I just finish my last sentence? Thank you. Saba appreciates the city's leadership on this effort and stands ready to continue working together to make it success. Let, remove barriers, let builders build, and let the market decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Kyle Snowden.
Yes, thank you. Hopefully you received this. I'm also with Tucson for Everyone. I want, excuse me, I want to give a little bit of context for this. The letter was written by our most engaged people. So that's like ten, fifteen people that are really tuned in. On the following pages are, so we, we then sent it out to people. And the people that weighed in after that are people that are not really engaged specifically in housing, except that they are interested in a city that's more affordable. That's kind of the primary draw. And I was really astounded by how many people weighed in. A hundred and fifty people and their zip codes, which was the only thing that we use. That's the only thing that we, I'm sorry, that's the only thing that we asked them to provide all over the city as well. I, I even did not expect as many people to weigh in and they were interested in it from a lot of different perspectives. Some people wanted, they had like an age component, whether that be that housing is more affordable to, than, or more appropriate to the needs of people that come from different ages, whether that's families, single people, you know, et cetera. And some people also had a sentiment that they wished that the housing available now was as affordable as it has been to other people in the past. There's also a lot of people that are interested in housing from the homelessness issue side of it because they have a lot of distrust for like institutional solutions, sort of like with the police or even just any other institution. And so when they saw a solution that focused on, you know, one family's ability to build housing that maybe could house someone that is on a bad path, you know, care for the members of their own family and their close friends, I think that that really struck a chord with them because it's not some institution, right? It's, it's a tool that they would be able to use themselves, whether it's for aging parents as well, you know, not related to homelessness, but for aging parents as well to take care of them or younger, or younger people as well. And then if I have at least one minute left, I wanted to say, I didn't expect to say this, but on the issue of splitting lots, I did this specifically. Two years ago, me and a friend wanted to buy a duplex and then split it. And what we found is that, and we weren't, we weren't dating, right? There's no, we weren't married, dating. There's really not a way for two people that aren't in a relationship like that to split a house. And when we looked into it, the only thing really was forming a condominium association, which doesn't really make sense for two people. So like there was no way that we could do it because we would both have to be full members on the title and neither one of us would have been able to sell our portion of it to someone or, yeah, yeah, we wouldn't have been able to sell it. And then that also, a bank couldn't have underwritten a loan for that. So I just wanted to also voice my support for that to be considered forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Ivan Lorch.
Hello, I can hear me here. And first I want to say, I think the middle housing purpose sounds wonderful. And I have a couple of comments or concerns. First, I'm very concerned that there's a missing key objective and that's about safety. Our existing streets do not seem to support our current needs. And I understand that we don't build infrastructure before the needs are there. And I understand there's codes and regulations about how many, you know, whatever roads and so forth you need for people and so forth. But you drive the same streets that I do. And, you know, you, you see the same amount of, it's, congestion is horrible. The number of accidents are horrible. Our roads are unsafe and people, I couldn't believe it, my husband and I, literally somebody ran a red light seconds. I could have probably counted to three and that, that's pretty common. So I urge you to add one additional objective and that is about safety. And it's probably broader than just roads. It's about emergency services and so forth. I think if you look back at the time where years ago, the response from, you know, TPD, for example, versus now, there's a big difference. So I really urge you to add safety as a key objective. Thank you. The second point that I have is, seems like there are a couple of key assumptions made. One is that this housing will be affordable and the other is on parking. And I'm sure there's more as well. I urge you, I love the idea. It's funny because when I first came in, I was thinking, you know, why are you going city? I, I, I used to manage big projects, right? So why are you going citywide? You do something small, you test it. But I love your points and you've convinced me that, that citywide does make sense. However, I absolutely believe, I urge you to consider a time, a timeline assessment. And I, and with that assessment that you do, that if you bailed it in now, I urge you to come up with actions based on that outcome of that assessment, just like you would do for any standard risk assessment. You would identify indicators and you would identify actions. And I urge you to do that because I for one, first of all, I do believe in affordable housing. I for one, I come from California, I come from Los Angeles and, and I have seen what happens, right? You'll have investors and sure, a two hundred and fifty thousand or a million dollars. Well, guess what? That's nothing for investors. So I am concerned that some of these key objectives, these main objectives will not be met. So I urge you to consider to have a timeline assessment with actions in your plan now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, I have John McNally.
Commissioners, can you hear me? Okay, I'm going to start off with taking umbrage with Nick's comments about historic neighborhoods. I've heard it from Nick this evening. I've heard it from other city employees, for instance, at our, one of our board meetings for neighborhood. Let's take a theoretical, the, the state law for historic designation states, fifty percent of the homes plus one must qualify for historic designation. So let's take as an example, very simplified, a ten-home neighborhood. Six of the homes qualify for historic designation, so the neighborhood qualifies. One of your developers comes along, buys up just one of those homes, tears the home down and puts four separate housing on there, each owned now by new buyers. That went from fifty percent plus one to below fifty percent, the neighborhood loses its designation. This has been misled by Nick and by other people within the city of Tucson. It's a shame that they have to resort to this. How many city council members are having this area that we're talking about? How many of the city council members are in this zone? How many of you are in this zone? The commissioner, okay, the commissioner that is talking by Zoom, I agree with her. There are a lot of concerns here. Affordability? Who's going to afford this? The only ones who are going to develop are going to be the large developers as we've had by this gentleman here. It's not going to be your mom and pop, excuse me, maybe a young family, and I know several of them, that's going to buy a little, you know, tract of land and want to build a house. It's beyond their capability. Now, I've had one tell me, why not just have the zoning so you could start out with a very small house and then add later on as you become more affluent? Maybe that's an idea to consider. The southwest neighborhoods or, let's get back to, I live in the Broadmore Broadway Village neighborhood. We also have Sam Hughes, all right? Affluent neighborhoods, do you really think that the homeowners should suffer? Because people want to buy up the land and saying, well, no, they're, you know, the state, when they passed this law, said it's the state that designated the business area where this development was to occur one mile beyond the business area, not the city of Tucson. But the city of Tucson took it and expanded it. My home was not in the original zone designated by the state. When you came out back early last year, you had several options. One of them was what you have now to country club. But one of the other ones, my home was just within, what was it, the two or three mile limit? Infrastructure? That's a laugh. Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up, I have Jay Tokoff.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to say, my first home in Tucson was a triplex. So I am in favor of middle housing. But I'm afraid that we are setting the stage for uncontrolled growth by outside investors that have no concern about the quality of life in Tucson. I've done quite a bit of research into Minnesota, to Oregon, California, Edmonton, places that have put this middle housing thing in place over large areas. And here are some of the problems that they are running into currently. Reduction of tree canopy, road congestion, overtaxing of the infrastructure, problems with trash collection, accessibility, in terms of accessibility, trucks can't get into the smaller complexes, these big trucks that we have to pick up. We have no, we have no provisions for where are all these garbage containers going to be stored on these properties? I know this personally because I have an eight-plex behind a piece of property and every Monday I have sixteen containers on my forty-five feet of front footage. And guess what? My place is not rentable and not sellable because nobody wants to deal with that. There's also problems with, there's not enough pickup. People are sharing bins, there's overflow, things that, these are all things that are happening currently in these locations. We're allowing prefab housing to reduce costs. That equals shipping containers with no consideration for compatibility with neighborhood architectural standards that are already there. We haven't addressed what happens with gentrification, homeowner displacement. When developers come in and because of scalability, we have to, we get better profit out of building not smaller units, but bigger units. So it's a small unit in a, in a low-budget area is much more profitable than in a high-budget area. So all of a sudden you have gentrification and people that have been living in a, a small house for three generations now can't afford the taxes because their property values have gone up. We're not addressing that. I believe, and I, I love this idea, I'm glad that they brought this up, about the idea of being able to subdivide smaller lots to promote homeownership. I think a lot of this plan is promoting out-of-state landlords, which sends economy, I mean, sends our dollars out of our economy to outside places and promotes renting instead of homeownership. I spoke about scalability. The big thing is it's not feasible now, but in the future, it could be. Cost of money, borrowing money goes down, material cost changes. What do we do when we have wide-scale people coming in and go, wow, we have no controls, we have no guardrails, we just have the ability for uncontrolled growth with absolutely no concern for what happens here in Tucson? I agree completely with, I think her name is Commissioner McBrer, that this is, should be on a trial basis. And I also want to point out to the fact that we're hearing five hundred people contributing. Somebody on the, up there said, we need to represent all the people out there.
Thank you so much. All right. Is anybody else in the building want to speak? Looks like that was everybody. I'll go down to online. Looks like we have Brandon Maitens. Go ahead and unmute yourself. You're up.
Hey, good, good evening. My name is Brandon Maitens. Turn on my camera, it's immense.
However, you're comfortable.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it, but I don't want to go by time doing that. So I'm a civil engineer here in Tucson, local builder, developer, and love what you guys are doing. See how hard you've worked on the middle housing bill. But I was shocked this evening. Oh, by the way, to the commissioner's question, I think someone asked about how many lots. There's six hundred and forty-nine vacant lots in the middle housing zone. Forty-eight would be added by my count to, when we went reducing the lot sizes by one thousand feet in the eligible zones, just something that I looked at about a month ago. But I was shocked this evening to learn that for the first time, it was introduced that parking would be capped to two units per property in the front. I mean, first of all, the front is really the only place left to park on the smaller lots. I'm developing in Bario Hollywood some houses. And I can tell you the number one question from buyers, potential buyers and renters is the parking. And the problem is this has the effect of absolutely discouraging. I think it becomes inadvertently a poison pill for this, for the whole intent of this bill. No builder in the right mind. And my plan is to build a middle housing for 2026. But no builder in the right mind, we want to build two to four units with only two parking spaces. We've had a lot of discussions, Nick, and I, we had discussions about this regarding the landscaping and configurations of the parking. And you know, this is being introduced tonight and not being, you know, exposed during the public hearings, I think is really concerning. You know, if you imagine why it's discouraging, why it's discouraging to middle housing, you know, for a single-family home, it works, right? You can get by with two units in front. If you build a duplex, now you're going down to one unit per family, basically. If you have two working parents in the family and they both have cars, you know, that's not going to work. If you have three units on a lot, now you're down to two-thirds of the space per, per home. And if you have four units, you're down to half a space per home. Again, you know, everybody wants to live in a walkable city, including myself, and nobody wants to buy or rent a home that has insufficient parking. So I think that, you know, those are my main, my main point. I love, again, I love what you're doing, but I just think this would absolutely kill the intended purpose of this bill by limiting, you know, it, it used to be that there were minimum parking requirements. Now by introducing a cap of only two spaces per how, per parcel, it just would absolutely discourage, I think, all middle housing because it's just, it's just not feasible. It's not anything that the market would actually accept, even if it's legally allowed. And that's all I got, so thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We have twelve minutes before the Presidio Garage closes. I'm not sure if anybody parked their car in there. Do you want to give people a chance to move if they need to? Do we need to take a quick moment? Sure, we will take a short break. We'll be back in a minute. Get back to it. Looks like we just have one more attendee with their hand up online. I'll go ahead and call on W's phone. W.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Hello?
Yes.
I'm having a hard time with this phone. I can't seem to get it on mute. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm gonna hope they're gonna hear me because I'm not hearing you at all. My name is William Craig. I'm the Vice President of Sam Hughes Neighborhood Association. I'm calling in this evening to make sure that you understand that a few of these things that we have been discussed already by my neighbors are really important to us as well. The fact that historic neighborhoods could be badly damaged by some of these problems. We don't understand why it is Sam Hughes was put in since only a small segment of our neighborhood even touched the one mile boundary. And most of our neighbors are over the one mile and some are as much as over two miles away. It seems to me that we should be looking to Scottsdale and the way they're handling the state and its mandates for our neighborhoods. It would be better if we would take a, a longer look at this. Make sure that no manufactured homes or cargo containers being placed in, in parts of the neighborhoods that absolutely don't belong there. We undersee, we see that, look, that, uh, we see that some of these amendments look rather loosely defined. Perhaps that'd be an easy way for some developers to take advantage of the situation. We'd love to see no more than two stories put in these places because at this point, people deserve a little bit of privacy if they own a home. A lot of our, my neighbors bought into Sam Hughes because it's an R1. The R1 seems to have gone away. We pay a lot to live in this neighborhood, but it seems that if a developer comes in, he could pretty much do what he wants to with the way this is being set up. At this point in time, we would like to see our setbacks no further than ten feet, no, no further, uh, reduced than ten feet. And one parking spot per house is absurd. I can't imagine, I don't know of anybody who has only one car in their household. With all of this said, I'm sincerely hoping that we take a better look at this because at this point in time, it doesn't seem to work for all of us. Thank you.
Next up I have Xavier Martinez. Or Javier Martinez.
Hello, good evening. Um, I don't really have too much to say. Like, everyone's been saying, everyone who's been in support of all of this have just been absolutely phenomenal. Which is indicating on how necessary we, we need to think about like our housing stock or lack thereof. And I speak as a person who lives in like the Palo Verde neighborhood. In Ward Six, and you know, I'm a single parent. I am. Not alone in just the, the, um, uh, the disadvantages that a lot of people within this section of, of town struggle with, with just like. Housing insecurity and, and also just like folks living on, on the street and everything. And I think being able to provide. An expansion of, of just housing and specifically middle housing, I think it just offers a lot of opportunity for, for community members to really build up. Just that, the sense of community that I don't believe is very existence, especially in spaces that are, you know, designated R1. The only concerns that I can even think of is just like, you know, I do hope that there is a robust. Collaboration with stakeholders who can provide support on, on the infrastructure aspect of, of things that are needed because. I mean, I myself, I, I have a car, just a single car. I wish I didn't. I wish that there were actual. Or just better. Accessibility to our transit system currently. I've been really hoping that Tucson would just make a push for like bus only lanes to make it more accessible for a lot of folks who don't have access to a car. Or who have access to a car that is on the brink of just, you know, just, uh, not working out anymore or not working anymore. So from what I've been hearing, um, everything that you guys have been working on, I'm, I'm in full support of it. And I just hope that like any developers involved are being mindful or that, you know, the city is being mindful on. Who's taking part in, in the development of these properties, um, so that we aren't dealing with just like the lack of affordability. So you, you just have my, most of my support for this, but thank you so much for letting me speak on this.
Thank you very much. Okay, I don't see any more hands online. Everybody inside has spoken, so, um. See. This open up to general discussion now. Do we, we have to close the open here, so, uh, motion to close open hearing, open.
Move that we close the public hearing?
Second.
Oh.
Hi.
Hi. Did ever say hi?
Hi.
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 Thank you so much. Yes, okay. Sorry, that was a disaster. I will do better next time. Um, general discussion. Commissioner Wellin.
Okay, I mean, I could, could start us off. I think I've, I've been pretty clear already from the last hearing to now where, where I stand on this, but. Um, I just want to reiterate a couple of things here and, you know, what, what this is and, and, you know, the issues with the, you know, what I see currently and, and. Uh, reasons why I think we should expand our boundary and, and what have you. So, um, really as I look at this, this proposal is simply a mechanism to unlock housing choice. And affordability on properties that already can do this. Um, you know, when we look at the, the zoning i- in, in the, the city, uh, that there, there's already this allowance. And so this, this isn't a citywide rezoning per se, but rather an opportunity to provide flexibility and reduce some of those barriers. That have prevented this type of housing from traditionally occurring. Um, as it relates to, you know, my personal current issues with the proposed boundary. It does not include areas within the city where affordability and housing choice are needed. Or in and around economic centers or reinvestment or investment areas, i.e. The current boundary does not include the thrive in the twenty-nine zone where we're actively proposing and planning, uh, right now. It does not include this Kino Sports Complex or Mosaic Quarter and all of the areas in and around that space. It does not include spaces like the Laos Transit Station or the Bridges or the El Pueblo Community Center. Um, again, all places where we would, you know, this type of housing would largely be supportive. Secondly, it does not provide an equal opportunity in all wards. Currently under the propose, current proposal, wards two and four would not be afforded any benefits and Ward Five would be. Would receive a very limited amount despite needing it just as much as the other wards that are, i- it is being proposed in with right now. I, I have heard a couple of different numbers thrown around, but when I wrote these notes, the number that was on my mind was, uh, there was an identification of about seventeen hundred vacant lots within the current boundary. If we look at what would be provided through the middle housing, that would be four lots on every one of those vacant lots. You really only, you get sixty-eight hundred units into the market. Yet we have a shortfall of eight thousand currently or projected in the next ten years of thirty-five thousand plus. So how do, how are we addressing, you know, our housing crisis in this, this endeavor? The other thing I wanted to note in, you know, when we talk about the number of vacant lots that are within the current boundary, how many of them are actually developable? Some of these, and you know, just my simple looking at what would be flagged as a vacant would be encumbered by flood plain or steep slopes. Their remnant pieces of right of way that aren't developable, period. And so when you think about it, we're not even getting closer to that sixty-eight hundred that we are thinking is, is the number there. And when we look at the ten acres sites that are available throughout the city, I did some, some mapping myself because I'm capable. And I, I got to about a hundred and forty-five lots that are vacant, that are greater than ten acres in size throughout the city. Where there is no express interest or development pending currently. So really the, the additional opportunity outside of this boundary. I- is, is, is not as, as grand as we, we might think. And so, um, I think we've, we've got to figure out how to. How to, to thread the needle here and, and particularly in the middle to support that, that densification. I've already noted my, my, my comment there of, you know, with what we're proposing, it's on the, the, the downtown, our most urban core. But then in our flower fangs where infrastructure don't, doesn't exist. And so how are we going to manage that? And the best way to do so is, uh, to, uh, densify your urban core. And so. When looking at a citywide implementation, here are some of the benefits why I think we, we should consider, uh, e- expanding our, our offerings here. Uh, when we look at the phase one and phase two outreach approaches just for this, um, present or this effort alone. Resounding feedback was received on the proposal. Over five hundred fifty-three participants in both phases, over nine hundred fifty-plus comments. A majority of them, over sixty-six percent suggested that they were in favor of a wider boundary. So again, why are we stopping where we are today? Next, I'd like to point out that an expanded boundary also prevents the burden of accommodating growth and affordability from falling disproportionately. In and around those, uh, specific neighborhoods such as those historic neighborhoods or neighborhoods seemingly experiencing development pressures already. A citywide approach supports a balanced housing market in all wards, per particularly where market demand exists and housing choice is lacking. I.e. where's the market driving currently right now and, and where are we going to support that housing? Based on what I see, it's the far east side where housing desirability or desirability is, and we're not providing that housing choice. Uh, it helps reduce displacement and gentrification and encourages multi-generational housing and aging in place. One thing that we haven't really talked about, but this comes up a lot in, in my daily life is, uh, this notion of large lot lands and, and rule on, on the other side. By implementing this policy citywide, we could ultimately reduce the rezoning pressures for large lots, particularly those more restrictively zoned than R1. And that helps create more opportunities to preserve those character of, or those low density character neighborhoods. It also provides an opportunity for higher income buyers to purchase homes, um, that would otherwise not be provided now because of the zoning restrictions. So what I mean here is if you had an SR zone lot that was three point three acres in size, you could do one home, which means if that's your, your investment, your. Retirement plan, et cetera, you are selling that off hoping you would make it or you enter into the rezoning to get twice the number of units to make that work for your investment. And so by expanding this offering further, we ultimately perpetuate that housing ladder and help start addressing that need of that hundred and twenty percent AMI. That has been also identified in this housing study. It encourages the densification within city limits and maximizes infrastructure opportunities. Those areas that are within NPZs, HPZs and AEZs are already protected as staff has noted. So expanding an opportunity further beyond is not going to be, the sky is falling, you know, the end of the world. Because there are already plans and regulations put in place to protect that from occurring. And then lastly, when we look at a citywide opportunity, your vacant lot numbers increase drastically. Again, we're not going to get anywhere to that thirty thousand projected shortfall, but we might get closer to half of what we need in the next ten years. So, um, with that, I, I think it's, you know, I, I support the endeavor, um, wholeheartedly. I think this is a, a great effort. I don't support the current boundary, but I support a, a citywide implementation. I also want to note that I do not like the landscape process, no offense. Um, I don't like how i- it's come to be and, and we're, I, we're doing it. That being said, I am not opposed to landscaping. Let me be very clear. I think it's a very important component of it. It's just more of a process aspect for myself. So I am fine with the regulations, but do want to see some timeframes put on. Uh, for us to reevaluate just all of the things that we're proposing to make sure that we are, uh, responding as necessary. Thank you.
Commissioner Kenny Lane-McKens.
All right. Well, thank you, staff. This is a lot of work. You've done a great job. Also, I don't think we've been in person since, but congratulations, Corin, on being the new director finally. And also congrats to Roy on your position. Very cool. So, I mean, uh, everyone has said a lot tonight already and there's going to be more said, so I'll keep it quick. Um, my perspective is that this. Um, my perspective is that this, um, isn't going to have as much of an impact as we think it will. It's, um, the, I think it's overblown, the concerns about it. I don't believe that this is going to destroy neighborhoods. Um, there are going to be the occasional bad projects, but it's not going to be because of this code. Um, I think what this will do is make a lot of existing non-conforming development suddenly conforming. There's been a lot of, um, in midtown, there's a lot of this type of housing that just, uh, was built in the nineteen twenties through the sixties, and then all of a sudden, the code removed the ability to, to do middle housing, and so there's a ton of non-conforming middle housing in the middle of town that has been neglected, and I think this will suddenly make it a lot easier to make those improvements to those developments, so that's a good thing. But also the fact that this might not make much of a difference is not a reason not to do it. We've heard a lot about the studies showing that these standards aren't going to make economic sense, and middle housing doesn't pencil and all that, but if and when, um, things change and it does make economic sense, there will be requirements in place. Um, but again, the fact that this doesn't make economic sense right now is not a reason not to do it. If anything, it does give us that trial period that people have been asking for, is that it, it'll be slow and gradually things might happen. And then in the future, if there are economic conditions that make this more, uh, appropriate, then, um, maybe we'll make some more changes then. So on that, I do also support reviewing this in two years, maybe three years, and after some time has passed, to see what might need to happen. So whoever makes a motion, you should probably say that. Um, I also want to, uh, just address some of the concerns that are in a lot of the comments that we've received, mostly in writing. Because I think that people are rightfully concerned about this, this has, you know, i- it impacts their lives, it impacts their homes, and their homes are most people's most significant investment. So I think it's important that their concerns are addressed, even if they might not be completely valid, so. Um, the, the thing with the airport environment zone, the AEZ, um, that's not an issue, as staff said, the AEZ covers most of central Tucson, and it doesn't prohibit residential housing. Um, I think also that the Air Force Base is notified of, of these types of changes. I know they're notified of rezonings within their vicinity, I'm not sure if they're notified of text amendments, but I'm sure, um, that they've had the, uh, they've had the opportunity to review this and object if they needed to, and they haven't. So it's not a concern to them, so it shouldn't be a concern to us. Um, there was a concern about Prop two oh seven, how this might be an issue, that's not a thing. Prop two oh seven applies to land use changes to your property, not to other people's property. Um, and then, of course, kind of the big one is that a lot of people are saying that this doesn't do anything to address affordable housing. Um, that was never the purpose or intent of this, the, uh, from the state level down. The point was to allow different types of housing that weren't previously allowed in order to increase the overall housing supply. Um, I hope affordable housing comes out of this, but it wasn't the purpose. So, um, I'm in support of this. Um, I think in terms of expanding the citywide, I have been convinced. However, I think there's going to be some areas of town that should start looking into the ability to do private restrictions, maybe, maybe add some additional protection to themselves if they might have some delisting concerns. Um, and then I'm also in support of the lot size, uh, equals the middle housing density proposal. Honestly, I thought that was, after our last meeting, I thought that was already going to be included, uh, but I'm very much in support of that, and so I think whoever also makes the motion, uh, should include that. So, thank you.
Commissioner Lane.
Um, thank you, I'll be quick, and I feel like maybe this is just a bit of a repeat, uh, summary, I'll say, rather. Um, I think that the, I, I, I would reiterate historic and NPZ neighborhood areas that have concern over their being delisted, that's a valid, um, very valid concern, and I think that there are steps that those neighborhoods can take to mobilize and organize themselves. Um, this zoning doesn't supersede HOAs, as far as I know, so, um, that could be a good mechanism to explore for neighborhoods to have those big concerns. Um, this ordinance is, is about addressing affordability across the board by creating housing options. It's not going to solve all of the issues, um, but we're giving homeowners and local landowners options. If we operate from a place of fear for outside developers coming to exploit our city, we are only limiting ourselves at the same time. We cannot be afraid of that, and this is very low-stakes, um, type of infill development. It is not a diamond in the sky that most developers are looking at right now. Again, like, people who already own pieces of land are the ones who are going to benefit the most from this, so, um, again, it's very low, low stakes. And again, I think the thing that we are not addressing and the public doesn't necessarily understand is, um, that this ordinance is very much about removing hurdles for, for residents, and it is also about streamlining regulatory processes for the city, um, development services. They have an incredible amount of work every day, and, and they are held up process-wise by small, um, applications. And so we need to streamline, we need to help develop tools that can streamline their work as well, and I think this does a nice job of that if it is applied across the whole city without a boundary. So I would be comfortable right now making a motion to move forward with the missing middle housing, as you've presented it, but with no boundary, um, with a review, period. You said two or three years, I said one, maybe two? Two is better, construction takes a long time, two years. Um, and also to include, uh, residential density allowances, uh. Lot size, say it again? Lot size equal to miss- to, uh, missing, yes. To middle housing density, thank you, what he said. Uh, I have it written down twice, even, and I also blundered it, so, uh, I don't think I'm missing anything.
Commissioner McKenzie, you still?
Thank you. Um, if the, uh, this is just a point of process, if, if this, uh, initiative doesn't have anything to do with affordable housing or helping the homeless, then, you know, the materials that we read shouldn't have that stuff in there. I mean, the stuff that I read that, you know, talked about some of those things and, and, uh, and what, uh, but that's a minor point. Um, I don't have a strong opinion on the, uh, boundary, uh, change one way or the other. What I do have an opinion on is, uh, is anything that can be done to, uh, focus these initiatives on vacant lots. And I would love to see, to wek- to Lexi's point, um, you know, some, some numbers that show, you know, to what extent this might, uh, improve the vacant lot situation, how many lots can be developed or are not, you know, developable or whatever. So, you know, I'd like to add something to the thing that encourages, uh, you know, the city council and, uh, staff to, you know, try to put some focus on that in whatever language can be modified.
Commissioner Small.
Thank you. Um, so a few quick things, what happens on January first, twenty twenty-six, if this isn't adopted?
Um, Commissioner Lampo, yeah, so it, uh, basically it would allow for a middle housing citywide with no limitations.
Okay. Um, and so a few other quick questions for you. Um, should there be a statement of severability, something that states, uh, where a conflict exists between the UDC and state law, state law controls, blank? Should there be something in the ordinance that states that?
I will defer to the, uh, city attorney on this one.
Uh, Commissioner Lampo and other commissioners, um, I, I, I would suggest against that just because of this preemptive nature of this, this particular statute. Um, it doesn't give you enough definition or prescription, uh, related to our code that would allow you to then refer back to the statute to figure out what exactly you're doing. I, I understand the sentiment, but I, I, I think in this particular case, I wouldn't advise it, I would advise against it.
Okay. Um, and then, obviously, I'm in support of the, uh, smaller lot sizes, uh, so four thousand square foot minimum lot size is what currently exists. Um, I checked other similar, including zoning structures, and I found a thousand two hundred to three thousand-ish square foot minimum lot size for attached and detached homes. Um, so this proposed, uh, what did you call it, density split option, that's what I put in my notes. Um, I, I would be all for that, but why not just say, you know, blank page, thousand five hundred square foot minimum lot size, period? No extra hoops to jump through, just, that's what we're saying.
Um, so I think, I mean, the idea really is to support the smaller-scale, middle-housing-ish, but also allow for it to be, um, the ownership model, like a fee simple model. And so I think that's the reason why it would be through middle housing and not just broad change related to that.
Um, and then several others have mentioned the, the landscape requirement. Personally, I read that as being in direct conflict with nine dash four six two, uh, point thirteen B four. Uh, it seems like it's directly in conflict with that, so is it possible to take that portion of this out and maybe look at that again after, uh, middle housing makes its way through the process?
Sorry, can you, um, maybe describe what section nine dash?
Oh, uh, so. Sorry, you don't have that memorized? Um, terrible. Uh, so permits for new single-family homes, uh, duh, 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 actually, I'll just pull it up, one second. Uh, so municipality may not do any of the following and, uh, set restrictions permitting or review processes for middle housing that are more restrictive than those for single-family dwellings within the same zone. So that just seems like it's in direct conflict with that.
Um, so Commissioner Lampo, and I think responding to the Commissioner Wellin's question earlier, um, this is, we are enacting this regulation, so for single-family as well as middle housing, so that we can actually simplify the regulations for middle housing of three to four units. Right now, those developments of three to four units, um, must comply with commercial landscape standards, which are actually, um, higher than what is being proposed in the proposal before you for middle housing. So what we wanted to do was actually streamline the landscaping requirements for middle housing, and that does require applying it to single-family housing as well, so that it complies with the section you just referenced. Um, because you're right, middle housing and single-family housing regulations must be, uh, the same per this state regulation. Um, but we also saw that this landscaping requirement, uh, is something that we heard a lot of support for from the community when we were, um, when we held a couple of public engagement and asked about design standards and landscaping requirements. Landscaping requirements were a high priority and also support the city's climate resilience goals, um, and just overall goals for tree canopy, shade, um, and heat mitigation. So that's the reason that that landscape standard is being proposed.
So I agree with all of that, and I'm all for, you know, tree canopy, we're, you know, that's something that we need to address, right? Um, it just, is it, does it make sense for this specific middle housing ordinance? And I, I, I don't think the answer to that is yes, I think that it should be separated from it and approached at another time, um, but that's me personally. Um, you know, the boundary question that has been raised a few times, um, you know, we're at like eleven fifty-nine on when this needs to happen. Um, so, you know, expanding the boundary, obviously, you put a lot of thought into the existing boundary, the way that you presented it to us. Um, you know, what would happen if, if we were to make a motion recommending that boundary be expanded? Um, obviously, mayor and council can take that into consideration, um, it's not something that, you know, necessarily has to happen, but is that something that can be done very quickly, uh, looking into what it would, what would happen citywide?
So, uh, I, I will say that, I mean, this needs to be passed by January first, twenty twenty-six, so, um, there's no, there, there isn't really time to go back and do the full analysis and things of that sort of.
And, and that's the concern, right? So, um, personally, I think as it's presented, the boundary makes sense, maybe we can look at it further down the road. Uh, it, you know, it's no secret that the UDC probably needs to be updated in many ways. Um, and so that's my personal belief on it. Um, and then that's really all the questions that I had, I had some other, uh, minor ones that have already been addressed, uh, by the other commissioners, but, um, yeah, thanks.
I think I had commis- okay, Commissioner Small.
Oh, thank you. Um, this bound- this boundary thing is very interesting, I, I, I came in here with a sort of a feeling that, you know, the, um, the boundary that you all proposed is, is appropriate as a sort of a test for this. I, but clearly, I think, you know, nobody thinks that this whole program is going to get shot out of a cannon. You know, we've addressed the affordability of it and, and whether anybody's actually going to, uh, do this in quantity. Uh, I went back to the, um, the state, um, language and honor before January first, twenty twenty-six, municipality with a population of seventy-five thousand persons, blah, 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 um, uh, must authorize and incorporate dot, 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 all lots is owned for single-family residential use within one mile of the municipality's central business district. So where did, where, where did we get this? Let's expand it greater than a mile idea, anyway, I mean, what, what flexibility do we have within this language?
So Commissioner Small, so essentially, um, it came from a couple of different places. One is that, um, as long as we're incorporating that minimum area within our larger area, we're still, um, meeting and conforming with state law, so.
Because I was looking for something that said, you know, a- at least one mile, but the municipality could allow it to be greater.
Yeah, we could always be less restrictive than what is required by the state, essentially.
Okay, so, so then to me, and then it becomes, uh, an issue about, are we using this to densify the city? And to hopefully incorporate, you know, start incorporating this into the middle of the city, so it densifies the city and does all the things with the public transportation and the walkability that we're talking about? Or are we using this as a tool to work towards that thirty-five thousand housing unit deficit that we're projected to have in ten years? And I don't think, I don't think middle housing by itself is going to solve that problem. Um, but certainly, um, I've heard very compelling arguments for the larger boundary, and so consider me conflicted on the, on the boundary issue.
Um, Commissioner Small, I mean, I think in response to your question about, is it about affordability or densification? I think it's definitely both, um, those are both goals for the city in terms of land use and policy goals that definitely we heard as part of Plan Tucson Outreach recently, and then as part of the outreach for not just middle housing, but over the past few years, as we've had conversations with the community about housing in general, about ADUs, the community corridors tool, and now this. There's a lot of support for greater density and infill as we are meeting our housing needs. People also want to see that as we're providing more housing and more housing opportunities, that we're creating more walkable neighborhoods that have density close to transit, close to infrastructure. So I would definitely say both of those goals are in mind.
So considering that, um, uh, again, this is not going to be, because a lot of the, the literature I read, the, the comments was like, oh my God, this is going to happen in our neighborhood right, or right now, and we, I think we all acknowledge that it's not. Um, wh- wh- what, what does it look like for saying, hey, let's use a smaller boundary and see how this goes? Do we predict that we're going to have enough to evaluate that in a year, we come back and we say, okay, now we're gonna, now we're gonna take it out to the rest of the, uh, community, or two years?
I think there's a couple of things about the reason, a couple of reasons for the recommendation of a phased approach of this boundary and then a citywide approach. So again, um, we definitely heard the community wants a citywide approach, and, um, staff have really taken that to heart, and we've looked at some ways to make it easier to build middle housing citywide. Um, but on the other hand, we did see there's a lot of analysis that we need to do to really have a proposal that is, provides a framework citywide. So I would say it's not just about evaluating what happens in that geography over one year, it's also spending a little more time refining, how could this approach? It's also spending a little more time refining, how could this approach in a wide variety of zones, different zoning districts, wide variety of neighborhoods? Do we have the tools right so that we are getting that density calculation right? For example, that we're looking at different, different types of zones. I have different minimum lot size, our rural residential zones and urban residential zones, so that we're looking at historic neighborhoods. Some of those aspects would also what we would be further analyzing and refining.
Thank you.
Commissioner Silva.
Thank you. A couple of comments on the code amendment, just real quick. On the dimensional standards table, when you go to M H two, you have four over three thousand square feet, but underneath there it says lot size minimum four thousand square feet. Is that a typo?
Commissioner Silva, yes, I believe that is a typo, it should be four thousand.
Great. And then for the lot coverage maximums, I would like to understand why R two is the only one we have a different lot coverage for a single family than multifamily? And then if you're building middle housing, what lot coverage do you use?
So Commissioner Silva, I'd also kind of like to know that too, it's really strange. Yeah, so it's kind of an anomaly within our code that's been carried on.
Could we eliminate it?
Definitely recommend to either, yeah, to make it consistent with the other zones. I think that makes sense.
As part of the motion?
Yeah. And yeah, or we could do it during code streamlining as well, which we're in the middle of doing. We have a code cleanup where we could clean up pretty much.
Next year.
As well. It's, yeah.
And the other one, I won't oppose it, but I want to like make it really clear, I hate the plant list. And I despise the plant list. And I think we're making a big mistake in forcing everyone to plant with this plant list. We're going to wait for a year or two years for the HUD grant to do all these code amendments. And then who's going to be ripping out the mature eucalyptus from the street like? And who's going to be dealing with the buffalo grass? Like, this is awful, but I understand that the clock is ticking and there's nothing to do, but this is a bad choice. Thank you.
Sounds like we can make an emotion. Okay. Mr. Silver, Commissioner Lane, which one of you?
Let me make the motion, you can second my. You might need to help me, because I would like to make a motion to pass the missing middle housing with zero boundary and using minimum lot size by density. Did I forget something?
And to revisit the code within one to two years, two years to bring back to the planning commission to review and modify if needed.
Yes, please.
And I second the motion.
That was a motion, friendly amendment and a second. All right, let's take, let me read this, I don't mess it up again. We have a second, all those in favor recommending to the mayor and council, say aye.
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 All those in favor say nay? No?
I don't understand. Can, can, can you repeat the motion? It seems like you said all in favor say yay and then all in favor say nay.
Yeah, Commissioner Zegir, you're correct, I should just read instead of going off the top, so I will redo that. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. We have one nay vote, motion passes with a majority. We have a recommendation.
Thank you.
Am I, am I allowed to say one thing a little not related to this at the moment?
Sure.
Okay, I just find myself in a position with a microphone in front of me and find it important sometimes to use a platform to say something. And I would like to note that we, over the last, since I've been on this commission at least, done some really nice, big changes to the zoning code. And over time, those changes have added up to add a lot of complexity and complication to our zoning code. Every, every minute change that we make like this feels like a Band-Aid. And as a person that uses the U D C every day, I know that it's very loopy and I find myself going in circles and there are small places where I find conflicts. And I think that we are at a really good time on this commission and with our current political makeup in the city to where we could probably handle and adding to our agenda a real discussion about rewriting the entire U D C.
Thank you.
From scratch. So I'd just like to
Yeah.
wonder if the mayor is listening or something. So I don't think that, I think that maybe a motion like this or an agenda item needs to come from a different place, but I think it's important to say out loud again and again until we get there, so.
I put my hand up. Is Pima County and the city of Tucson working on getting their codes slightly, trying to get them coordinated? Did I hear something about that?
Just real quickly, Commissioner Zegir, we do coordinate with Pima County. And when we do code changes, like where we're going to be in future agenda items, I'll talk about the large scale data centers. We're coordinating with them to make sure that when we do make changes that we're in sync when we can be. I mean, obviously, development patterns in the county and here are different, so they're not always going to align exactly, but we try to as much as possible.
Thank you.
Maybe if we rewrite our U D C, they will get better too.
I'm going to call for the next agenda item, number four, P D S D staff announcements.
Yes, we have a exciting announcement, which is that Plan Tucson twenty twenty five, our Prop four seventeen was adopted by the voters last week. Thank you to the amazing team at P D S D who helped develop that general plan and the thousands of Tucsonans who gave input. And thank you all for the time and effort you put into holding those public hearings, deliberating and making a recommendation on Plan Tucson. We're really excited to have a new general plan that's up to date, that reflects our community's goals and values for today and for the next ten years.
What did it pass by?
I think it was sixty three percent in favor.
It was about sixty three percent, so around twenty thousand votes were served.
Congratulations to you all, it was a huge, huge effort.
All right. Next item, number five, future agenda items.
Yeah, so future agenda items, we have a couple of things, not in the immediate future, but coming up. First one, as I mentioned, the text amendment related to large scale data centers. We did a study session on this. Commissioner McCantsy is going to actually join us on our technical advisory committee. And then he'll be able to actually, you know, be a part of that conversation as we move forward. So that is, that is moving forward. We actually have a technical advisory committee meeting coming up on Monday, and we'll be hosting a couple of those that'll inform a potential proposal. And then the second one, we will be going to get this process started, but related to a kind of code cleanup and streamlining effort, which we had mentioned previously. And so that'll be coming through and that'll include the addressing the signed code sunset date as well, which needs to be done by June, so that'll be coming up in the new year. That's what we have.
Great. I'd like to request in our next study session or just any agenda item, just a makeup of that technical advisory committee, just kind of like the areas being represented, not necessarily who, but.
Sure, and I'm happy to, I mean, we're happy to send that out to the commission as well and then we can.
If that's as easy an email, that'd be great too.
Sure.
Commissioner Small.
I have recently learned something new that I am coterminous, which means that, and I think I'm not the only one amongst this body. As a result of the recent election, my commission does not extend automatically to the next commissioner. And I don't know what that means exactly, but this is, is at least for the time being, until I figure something out. This is my last official meeting.
So in general, Commissioner Small, usually those commissioners will stay on through the next commissioner or through the next council member. A lot of times they get automatically re-upped if they've been reelected. But otherwise, a lot of council members will usually just meet with the commissioner and then they'll just.
I figured that was probably an option, but but I do know that, you know, my term officially expires on December first and the new commissioner is being sworn in, I understand on the first. So I don't know how much time that takes to get reinstated. So that's just my comment, I'm going to try to do it. See if she wants me.
Well, we have appreciated having you on the planning commission, Commissioner Small, and to all of you. And yes, as Dan mentioned, all planning commission appointments are coterminous with the service of the council member that is appointing the planning commissioner.
Right, right. So what's the precedent for this? Does the commissioner take a look at who their planning, or the council, like take a look at who their planning commissioner is and sort of say, hey, I need to reach out to this person and?
Yeah, I think you'll get contacted or you could, you're welcome to reach out and the clerk's office will be in touch.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Small, just to clarify also, the commissioner serves until a new commissioner is appointed. So if that doesn't happen right away, you would continue to serve.
Oh, cool, I'll show up anyway.
Sounds good.
Yeah, exactly, what are we eating next time?
All right, item number six, call to the audience. All right, seeing none, call to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you all very much, great work.
Good night.